Thank you, Madam Chair. Certificate closed session pursuant to Subsection 2.2-3712 D in Dakota, Virginia, 1950, as amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon real call certifies that to the best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom from Formation Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure of the requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Being known, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify it by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Duane Wallace?
Yes.
All right. David E.
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
Boris Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dunn?
Yes.
Madam, you have approval to turn to regular session.
Thank you. All right, at this time, if we'll place stand for application remains standing for Cleveland.
Thank you, dear Lord, for this day. Thank you for all of our family, our friends, the people of this community. Lead, guide, and direct us, help us to do thy will, to know that we are making the decisions for the people that are in our county, that we represent them, and we represent you to do the right thing by these folks. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Madam Chair, in my opinion, we accept the agenda that's presented.
All right, yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first item is to open the floor for public comments, public hearing on the Cleveland School property, transferring it to the Russell County IDA. At this time, if anyone has a comment on this action. We'll close the public hearing on the transfer of the Cleveland property. Next on our public hearings is the given school lease to Southwest Virginia Star Project, Star Ministries, correct term. So if anyone has any comments on the public hearing on the given school lease, please step forward.
My name is Brown Sims, and I'm here on behalf of the Strick Kings Auto Club. In reference to the Southwest Virginia Star Project, we as an auto club support the Star Project and their mission. We actively fund, raise to assist in the many charities that we provide. Many of our members have at one point needed assistance for themselves and their families. As Star Project has always been more willing to step forward with assistance, whether it be Christmas presents for our children, supplies, clothing, food, appliances, and furniture. The Star Project is always willing to help anyone with their needs. This organization not only helps people in our county, but also surrounding counties. It would be a disservice to our community for this organization to have to relocate or disappear altogether for lack of base of operations. Many families and individuals depend on Star Ministries with use of Given School. Not only would they be able to continue their amazing charities, they would have the room to expand on many aspects and services that they provide. In closing, I implore this committee to please allow the Southwest Virginia Star Project to use the former Given's Elementary School at a minimum fee. Thank you for your time, and please remember, we do this for our children and those in need.
All right, same none. We'll close the public hearing on the Given's School lease. Next is our public hearing concerning the FDOT Route 637 discontinued bridge. It's a prescriptive easement of right of way. Anyone want to make a comment on the public hearing on the discontinuation of the bridge?
Quite good.
All right, same, same none. We'll close the public hearing on the disclosing of the bridge. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our July 12 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
In the post.
I abstained, that wasn't your last name.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. All right, next on the agenda is approval of our expenditures, approval of paying all the bills. Do we have a motion for that?
Some movement, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Second, Lou. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And call you abstaining again. Thank you. Thank you. Correct. All right, the next thing is our committee appointments for the board considerations. They were tabled at our last meeting. The first thing we have is our county advisory committee.
Madam Chair, that was, that was the one that we all agreed that we would make an appointment to. Each supervisor would have one appointment to the committee to look at the issues that are being handed down from the state, these unfunded mandates in relation to a lot of different things. So I don't know how we want to proceed with this, each, just by supervisor.
Katie, do you think just each district?
Has to make their nomination of who they're going to appoint.
Yes, you just, to start with whoever you want to. That was my understanding, the advisory committee, that each of you would select a member from your district to serve on that advisory committee.
This is an ad hoc committee that will discuss the things with the schools, the unfunded mandates with the school. Tim, we'll start with you.
I do not have anyone yet.
Okay. Lou?
I'd like to wait on that, if you don't mind.
Okay. Carl?
I'd like to call it Jennifer Chandler.
All right. David?
I'd like to point Lynn Hayes.
Steve?
I'd like to point Nate Kazir.
Boris?
I don't have anyone as of now.
Okay. And for myself, I don't have anyone. The one I asked has not called me back, so I have no one at this time.
Okay. The dilemma here is, we had asked the county attorney for advice on, I keep getting questions on how is this supposed to act, how is this committee supposed to react? And it is an ad hoc, so it has, it has volunteer time, it has no money behind it, and it has no teeth or anything else. It's just a recommendation or an opinion to the board supervisors to tell the school board what to do, who is an elected body. So I'm just questioning that, and I need your help on this.
Yes, it's, and I think when you all formulated the advisory committee, I asked those questions. It doesn't, yeah, nobody would be paid a fee for attendance at any meetings, so it'll be a volunteer, and they give advice to this board on issues related to, my understanding, you know, I think, I think it was in relation to a specific issue, but informing it, you know, issues affecting the community, and they would just give advice, they would not have any authority. Obviously, they couldn't vote, they're, only the elected officials can vote on the board of supervisors and the school board. So as far as that, they don't have any authority. The way I saw it is, it was just, I guess, an organized way for the community to present issues and concerns to this board.
Well, I guess my position is to make it more like a town hall event where me as an elected official goes to the people in my district and have the ability to meet them at a location, or, you know, in regards to a lot of issues that, that we face consistently and not have to wait till the board meeting monthly to be able to discuss some of these topics.
I think you could go and attend maybe some of their meetings, but again, this board would have to be aware of the limitations of FOIA, and not more than two of you could be present at a meeting, otherwise it would be an illegal meeting.
Exactly. I think it was intended that this board would, that this committee, not this board, this committee would be open to the public. However, there's only seven members on this committee. It would formulate the recommendations, they could take the comments from everybody. And certainly, I'd want to attend some of it myself, but I understand you have one or two supervisors in one area.
Yes, and, and again, when, when you formulated it, and maybe your vision will change as it progresses, but there was not really any, since it wasn't a really, it wasn't a formal board or authority, there was no need for bylaws, but I mean, you know, I don't know if that's something that will be created, I mean, for it to be open to the public and things like that, I mean, I don't, I don't, I guess, I guess the way I envisioned it, from what you all described, it would be kind of up to them, like, they would be the version of individuals.
This is kind of a formal way for the community to become involved and funnel it into one group that can bring it back to the board supervisors in a formal.
In an organized fashion.
Organized fashion, yeah.
As opposed to just each citizen bringing a concern.
I'm sure there are a lot of people that you don't want to come up here and speak, you know, but they're, they're willing to voice their opinions to some of their neighbors and friends, and you know, if you've got, that committee is meeting, let's say they're meeting up in the Rosedale area, you know, that gives the people the opportunity from that area to come in and say, I've got a gripe about this or that, or whatever. And the board, that committee can take it and polish it up and kind of weed out, maybe it's legitimate, maybe some of it's not, but they can bring a report back to the board. It's, it's kind of like a filter, I guess, as much as anything, and they can, they can make recommendations to the board.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and any citizen can do that, but I mean, the way I see it, like you said, is just a more organized fashion as opposed to one citizen doing it.
Let me put, I just have to put them. Would not a citizen be able to do pretty well the same thing to, to an elected person? If, if they've got a complaint, take it to the board member. When I was campaigning, I told them, I take your concern, your need, and your gripe to the board. So if they would do that, and then each one of us members stand up and do behalf, could that not take the place of that? Or now we're looking something.
This, this is just mechanism, get more people involved, you know, it's an ordeal trying to run you or me down, you know, and make an appointment to see you, or whatever, you know. So this is just an opportunity, you know, for people, get more people involved in this whole process.
Any other comments? Any thoughts? All right, the next one we have is our Russell County Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I think, I included some stuff in, in our board package. I, I think, you know, when we decided we were going to have one appointment with a certain board member, but we're not going to take anybody off the board, you know, who's on there. And we need some sort of mechanism as to how we're going to do this until we finally get down to that one point, that one appointment per board member, because, you know, it's probably going to take two or three years, at the very least, to, to get to that point. So I did a little analysis of it, and it's kind of like, say, I'm just going to use the planning commission for example, you know. When I lived the planning commission, District 1 has one member, District 2 has no members, District 3 has three members, District 4 has no members, District 5 has two members, District 6 has two members, and at large actually has no members. Although I think you're, you're probably, you're that large, yeah, that large. So, say for example, I'm in District 5, I've got two members, and one of my appointments comes up. I can either reappoint him, appoint somebody else, or just pass by and say that my second member, you know, I'm going to say my appointment for that second member, in which case, the next supervisor who doesn't have, which would be number 2, 5, 2 or 5, would be ready to make an appointment there. I know it's kind of complicated, but there's no, there's no easy way to do this, other than just, you know, dive in and do it.
Dustin Keith, is he in yours too?
No, I think he's in yours.
No, he lives in town, he runs for town council.
He's not his address.
Where? He lives in town?
He used to live, and his address is Gilford Road.
He runs for town council?
Yeah.
He's moved back out. That's his old address. That's, that's when he was back in high school, as a young kid.
I don't know. I'm just going by what's on the planning, I'm going by what's on the Russell County Planning Commission list of the board members and their addresses.
He's on the board of that now.
He's on the planning.
The planning commission, yeah.
Yeah. And like with the other one.
He's coming up for three or four years.
Uh huh. He should be.
October.
And like the other board member, you made that motion for the other board member that's on there. You nominated Andy Smith back.
I did?
Yep.
Well, Andy's not in my district, he's in your district.
Yep.
This is, this is where the complication.
That's right. That's where, that's where it gets real muddy, real quick.
First of all, I guess we need to find out where Dustin lives. Do you know who one's at? Or can you find out? I've already asked you about two others.
For Dustin, this is hard. We'll put him on the spot. So, yeah, it's, it's getting muddy real, real quick.
If anybody has any suggestions how to do this, open now or forever, keep your peace.
Yep. So.
Okay. You open the door. Now, I, you know, when we got here in 2016, that's one of the things that we agreed upon. We said that equal representation was quite important, because as we look through, I appreciate the town of Lebanon, but then, oh, they're all stacked up here on some of these committees real good, and District 2 is out in the cold on some of them. Now, that's not a problem, so I don't, I don't, I don't want to be ugly about it, but representation is important for all of us. Now, so let's move along to how we're going to get this done, and I, I'm going to say straight up, I'm going to vote with you on this. But, I got a but in there, but I need the attorney to take care of a few little issues in, in what you wrote for us last time, and I'm not happy with some of the language in there, so I think we can work through that.
I think we do need to amend it, and that if you cannot find somebody in your district that you have the option, point from anywhere in the county, because, I mean, if we're going to have seven board members, we can't leave a board three members short.
I agree.
Or else there'll be.
I agree. So, so one of the things that I'm proposing in all of this is that we look at the committees that, that are already there, and we reach into those committees and ask those chair people if they would like to make a suggestion on how to make this role easier perhaps, because they have not been asked a thing. And I think it's unfortunate that we haven't done that. I, I, but getting this and trying to go through 200 and some pages, you don't really think about things until you, we all get here and we can actually discuss. So with that being said, that's one of the things that I would really like to see done, is to reach into these committees, because they all know how they interact with each other, and what they need, and how each one represents a precinct or a district. So that's one of the things that I want to ask for. The other thing is, I would kind of like, the, the language changed a little bit in this other piece of, you know, if you don't find a qualified candidate, I, I think all people are qualified to serve, even us up here are not required to have.
I guess if she had a qualified candidate who was willing to serve.
And I get that, so I just want everybody to know that everyone's qualified at, at some level or another to serve on these, in these, all these positions. So that language bothers me greatly, and there's a couple of more pieces, but I won't go into that. But I'm kind of there, so if, if our attorney would kind of help us out a little bit with laying some guidelines, I would be more than happy to listen to that and, and be amenable to that. I know Steve and I are going to kill you, we know.
That's, that's fine. I was just going to make the recommendation, because I know we did a motion to amend the bylaws at the last meeting, and then this would further amend that, amend it. I would just, I would just make the recommendation, which is just a recommendation, to let me look at it, to make sure it all works well together and that I don't see any issues, because when you amend things piecemeal, sometimes, you know, it, it doesn't read the way that you intended to, and so I, I don't think that would be a bad idea, and if board members would send me suggestions of language they would like to see, like as criteria or whatever, the motion that we passed last time, and this motion, I mean, I could try to craft something that addresses those concerns, but I'm happy to do that.
Well, anybody in District 4 that would like to serve in any capacity.
I'll tell them.
Sign up.
Sign up.
Yeah, contact the county and sign up if you have a desire or want to participate and see this, and see Russell County grow and do better, you know, or contact me directly, because we need participation, we need people to get involved, and we need people, you know, that are willing to, to serve. So I mean, anybody in, in my district, and I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody here, I noticed Lou was grabbing the hammer about the same time I've done this, but.
You are, you're talking well for us.
Yeah, just, just put in an application to the county and let us sort through these things. I mean, we would love to have, have more people get involved.
But now, I will say, I do think that we need to say this clarification on this is, our little community centers that are already functioning in those, that's, that's not in this mix at all.
Anything less than seven should just be done by general election.
Okay.
And those community senators that are in your district, I think we've all agreed that you can make the point.
It's hands off. We, those, those people in our communities are working in our community centers. Yeah, I got it. So I just want to make that perfectly clear also.
Do you want language like that in the bylaws that addresses those boards that say that that'll be done by?
I really think we should.
Nominated by the, by the board member of his district.
Well, if you look at the motion, it says anything less than seven, I think, would be done by general election, nomination election.
Okay. Do you, do you want to put in there to be specifically that the board member's district who it's in would be, be the person to nominate it, or anybody nominated?
If it only affects your district.
Yeah, that's right. And it should.
I think it's more or less a gentleman's agreement, and gentlewoman's agreement, excuse me, that, you know, if it's in your district, you're going to get to make the points. I don't see it's necessary, but.
Do you think we do?
Do you think we do?
I mean, no, I, all I can say from a legal standpoint is if there was ever a disagreement, there would be nothing.
Well, you know, then you've got the at-large member, you know, who.
Exactly. Who would, who would, you know, who would he get to nominate, so I mean, it's just good, it's good to think those things through, so you can craft the, the bylaws that best serves what you're trying to achieve and.
Yeah, and I think this is a real healthy way to do this, I do. I do not have a disagreement at all, I just think that we need to discuss this out for the public's ears, and I think that we need to all be in a kind of one accord here, and I think we are on some of these things, but I want to hear back from the Planning Commission, the IDA, I want to hear back from those people who are working diligently already in those committees, and they know how they work. I don't know how they work, I'm not serving on those committees. And so I really want to know that. Plus, one of the things that Mr. Eaton brought up last time was that we talked about quorums, and they were hard to get. Okay, well, I'm just going to say this, because this is my big opinion, and I'll share it. So if you're not able to attend regularly and give that board its support and be there to work in your community, then you need to be removed. And so I need to know that those boards have those in their bylaws, so that they don't have to say, well, that's what you did to us, because you reduced our number, and we don't have anybody to vote for.
Agreed. I'm with you.
Okay.
My comment is with the Highway Safety Committee, that's a big board, but I will say, one of the gentlemen is a state trooper, wants the county chair, and we're on, works for FDOT. I kind of think they need to kind of stay.
I think those are appointed as advisors, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, they are. So those kind of need to stay, those folks, and then we have Tim and Carl on there, they're representing us, I think we need to stay with those folks, and my Mr. Altizer is deceased, and I did not replace him last year, so he's been off.
I think, I think if supervisor wants to be their own representative, they can be their own representative.
So are we going to put that in there?
I think that's your appointment.
Well, clarity though.
But, but we have to remember, you can only have two.
I'm sorry.
First come, first served, Madam. Yeah, I, Carl, how many times does Sheriff mend the Navy?
I haven't seen her.
Okay. I'd like to take care of her.
He never means, he never, and he turns stuff in all over the county.
Yeah. So there's some doing, some dumping in that advisory capacity.
But are they considered a vote in that particular board?
There is no voting, it's just a.
It's a consensus, consensus?
They, they just all do recommendation, please. Do you need a motion of any sort, Katie, or just, can you take our direction and just run with it?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's not a motion on the floor to approve anything, so I think you're just directing me to, with these concerns, to bring you some language back that, you know, incorporates what we did last time and this time, so I mean, I'm happy to do that and take any suggestions from board members, and then ultimately it'll be up for you all to decide what language you want to go with.
I guess, and we need to table these again?
Well, you need to table, or do you want to go ahead and do the Dade Community Center, because it's there?
Yeah.
Do the Library Board, they're.
The Library Board is, again, is an appoint, I mean, it's.
You'd rather.
I mean, it's going to be subject to whatever.
Right.
And there, there is one that Dr. Wright had called me about since he's in my district, and it's on the Southwest Community College Advisory Board. Lynn King is at for reappointment, but he is not eligible, he is going to go to the Foundation Board, he has talked to Catherine Easton, Dr. Easton's wife, and he has asked her if she would be willing to serve, and she has accepted, so I think.
Well, this is a voted, I've been here, and we've always voted on this, and we do have an application for a Russell County citizen who has an application for us, who is a retired school teacher, and.
This was specifically asked for by Dr. Brand.
Well, he may not even know this lady, and she's, she's an excellent person.
Okay, we'll just pass it through, and just table it, and I'll call them and tell them we couldn't do that.
Because this lady that did. Because this lady that did put in her application is an outstanding person, she's worked hard for the county, and she deserves consideration also. And Dr. Wright might not even know her.
Okay, so do we get to fill some of their appointments today?
You do.
With only the community centers?
What about the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission?
And the Community Policy Management Team? That's pretty much by their bylaws, because this person is the special ed director for the county schools, so what do we do with that one?
You can take up whatever appointments that you all want to take up. I don't know if you want to pick out the ones you think you should table and have a motion to table and then proceed on the rest of them?
So if we don't have an appointment already on those seats, we're allowed at this point that we can go ahead and do that?
From what I just heard, the ones you were talking about, my understanding was that they weren't really controlled by this new policy, that they have their own provisions, sort of like we've talked about, like the IDA appointing somebody from the town. Is that correct about the boards you were talking about proceeding with? That they wouldn't really be affected by whatever changes you make to the bylaws?
Right.
That was my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you can do all, you can do nothing. I mean, that's up to the board, but if you want to make it clear, if you want to do the ones that are not affected by the policy, just make a motion to table the ones that are, that you are going to set off until the next meeting.
Okay. So you want a motion for us to pick the ones we want to table, like the Planning Commission, the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development, Library Board, Highway Safety? What else? What's anybody else's concern? Which ones do we want to table? IDA? We don't have IDA, they're really having that right now. They will next month.
Yes.
They will next month.
So we will be prepared for those folks to get notification in a timely manner, that they can have their meetings this month, and they would be able to discuss what we're discussing now, and how we would like to try to proceed with them being in the know, so to speak, and have an opinion on this, so for feedback. I see we have our IDA chair sitting here. I don't want to stick on anybody else, but, you know, some of those members, Ernie, I apologize.
Good.
Do you have an opinion?
What do you think that you should do? Table them all, Katie, or?
I want to make a motion, we just table them all until the next meeting, and just get on with business.
I'll say it.
All right. And Steve, and who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling them again?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move all the way down, thank you, to our citizens' comment, and I have a sheet from Dora Martin.
Dora.
Dora.
Dora Martin.
Dora.
Step forward, state your name and give your address, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dora Martin, D-O-R-A-M-A-R-T-A-N.
And your address?
173 North George Avenue in Lada.
Thank you. Go ahead, Katie.
I'm not asking for anything, just, I just wanted to inform you all, on the last weekend of September, which is September 25th and 26th, we will have our first annual Vet Fest at the Russell County Fair. What this is, is supposed to be a community gathering for everybody, young, old, whatever, to come together, connect with veterans. We're going to have, Saturday is going to be a more family-oriented day, we're going to have a 5K run block, a 12K ruck, we're going to have a cornhole tournament, we're going to have a tug-of-war competition, which Bill Watson has already challenged the Lebanon Police Department, so if you all know anybody who wants to challenge anybody else, please feel free. And there's going to be a bunch of children's games, all the children's games are free, face painting, and egg races, just old hurricanah stuff for fun and to fellowship and make connections. We will also have a resource center, we have a lady from the VA who will help, we will have somebody from the Department of Veterans Affairs, there's somebody from a fly fishing, Veterans Fly Fishing Company, yes, thank you there, that is our flyer. The Appalachian Service Doc Group is going to be there, the Wounded Warriors that have opened a ranch in Bristol, they're going to be there, just a lot of resources for our veterans and families to take advantage of Sunday. We're going to have the church service at 10:30. We will have a big car, truck, big rig, whatever vehicle we can bring in show that is going to be judged until about 1 o'clock, and then Appalachian Backroads Director Eric Hubbard is going to organize a ride for us, we're going to have a three-hour ride, and we'll be back at the Russell County Fairground about 4:30, and have a meal together and fellowship and hand out trophies. Just wanted to let you all know, if you have any questions, I have cards here with my number on it, with Alfred Wicks, who's the director of, the president of Fallen Warriors, who are helping me. Our phone numbers are on there if you have any questions, and I would love for you all to come out and be a part, and just get to know the veterans and see how we can help one another. All proceeds will go to Stop Soldier Suicide. Thank you, appreciate it. Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Sean Vance.
My name is Sean Vance, I live in 99 Willow Springs, District 1, Tim Lowell Lacy's District. I have a couple different things, unfortunately I have three minutes. First off, I do participate in the Star Ministry, I call their auctions for them twice a week, and if you all don't step up, I see you all give money out all the time, "Hey, we need a new sign, here's $500." "Hey, I need some dirt for my field, here's $500." But she does a lot of good for the community, so maybe you should step up and wrangle that down a little bit. Of course, I don't know if you're all with that, you might say, "Hey, it's free," and then you'll get a good amount for change. Second thing is, is that with this tabling of this committee thing going on for the second month, as a citizen of Russell County, how do you think I look at you all? That you all can't make a simple pick of one person in 30 days? Some of you said, "Well, I ain't picked nobody." It's been 30 days. Now you're going to table it a second time, 60 days. Next thing you know, everybody be going, "Hey, Happy Merry Christmas." And what you all do? We'll table it with the hand. So as a citizen of the county, how much do I think you all know what you're doing if you all can't pick one person in 30 days? Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Bron Sims. Can you just be safer? Okay, got you. And Cheryl Vance.
I'll be quick tonight, while you're doing your committee thinking and everything, I just wanted to put it out there, I know we had spoke about it once before, when I tried to get on one of the committees, about making the committees meet at a more reasonable time, because for people like myself who work full-time, we would love to be more involved in our communities, and we really don't have a chance, because a lot of the boards meet during the day, during the week, when we're working. So that's all I got tonight.
Anyone else? State your name and address and your concern.
Nick Kaiser, 918 Green Valley Road. It has actually been 46 days since you passed a resolution to create an advisory committee specifically to look into educational choices, not, there's no mystery here. You can go back and look at the tape if you don't remember that well. If you don't remember that well, probably you shouldn't be on this board. It's absolutely ridiculous that there's four members on this board that haven't picked a person, and then to make excuses, to make excuses unacceptable, unacceptable. I've got 1,000 names on a petition that want options. There's kids that need options now, not at Christmas, okay? We're dragging our feet here, and it's ridiculous to act like, "Oh, well, we didn't have enough time." 46 days, all you got to pick is one person from your district, one. And I know there's been people that have contacted you all.
Absolutely.
It's absolutely inexcusable, and it tells parents that want school choice that you don't care about. It's ridiculous. And imagine that, that it's the Fab Four that's the ones that don't have picks. Imagine that. Ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. Ridiculous.
Any other citizens? Senior, we'll place our citizens' comment here. Constitutional officers? Next we have our county attorney reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that I have for the board's consideration tonight is the comprehensive agreement on the construction remodel of the Russell County Courthouse. I have worked with our consultant, Skanska, to review a contract that will be provided to the contractor to JA Street. He has made updates to the contract, and I've made updates to the contract. I'm asking the board to approve this agreement tonight, subject to my final review, authority to make minor changes and final approval. That way, if there are minor changes suggested by the contractor, I can work with Curtis and formulate language that we believe is in the county's best interest. Obviously, if there's a substantial change suggested, I would bring that back before you for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I want to make a motion, we approve this contract, subject to the final revisions, and any minor changes that are felt appropriate by our legal counsel.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The next item that I have is in relation to Project Jona and RFQ that this board authorized. The committee that involves members with Tazewell and Buchanan County met, we did receive two proposals, and we did rank those two firms pursuant to the First Amendment Act, and would like to proceed pursuant to procurement, authority to negotiate with the firm that was ranked first, and so I'm asking the board to approve the RFQ committee's recommendation as to the proposals.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the recommendation of RFQ committee, and we authorize him to proceed with negotiations with the top-ranked firm.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The third item under my reports is the Cleveland School property. There was a public hearing, excuse me, there was a public hearing at the beginning of the meeting regarding the board transferring this property to the IDA. You know, there was no information, no individual spoke during the public hearing. I have been able to do the appropriate title work to get a date, but it would be up to the board's consideration if they want to approve this transfer.
Do we have a motion for this?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we transfer this property over to the IDA.
I'll say it.
Red second. Carl, any discussion? No, we're going to forward for discussion.
Well, what kind of end use are we going to have there? Is this a speculative move?
I can speak. Yeah, we can speak.
All right. The chairman of the IDA's here, if you'd like to get up and speak, let the public know what's fair, what's the plan. Any financial records, any end documents, anything we need to know about?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. As we discussed last month, we do have a company who is interested in occupying this property and employing some people, and actually doing some renovations to the property and improving it from the position it is in now. We have, that group is actually here tonight, and we'd be glad to answer any questions about their business and what they plan to do, and their end use, and what they plan to succeed at, is what we plan on. This property, as you well know, is set into for a number of years, and this is an opportunity for us to bring it back to life, do some renovations to it, make some improvements to it, and hopefully save the property from the condition that it's in now, so-
Who will pay for the renovations of this building?
The occupying company will pay for that.
So that will be in the papers?
It is in the agreement that they will sign, yes.
Do we have that in writing on the-
No, we discussed that at our last meeting, and Katie will be drafting that agreement. There's a lot of pieces within that, and we'll be glad to share that with you before it's executed, if you'd like to review it.
Now, this is only the property, it just sort of outlines the building, this doesn't affect the horse or the ink or the-
Correct.
-sider or anything.
No, it truly is the plot, yeah, the plot that the building sets on, that's basically all it entails. That's correct.
Any questions?
Do you have any comments?
I'm happy to answer any questions that were mine.
I'd like to see that, all those documents, before we, we've seen the documents on other stuff.
I mean, I think, again, before you dispose of property, you have to have a public hearing, but you don't have to take any action if there's additional information that you need, or I guess an option would be to approve the conveyance to the IDA, subject to your final approval of the agreement between the IDA and the company. I mean, there's a couple different options of how you can handle it.
There's a timeline in, that you all are trying to get in and get operational.
They are trying to get operational, yes.
Well, you discussed with us prior, and it was in executive closed session, we can't discuss in public, so we've never had any follow-up with that, if that's all transpired and finished. So, I mean, I have no problem with this, but I just think we need to see some more, we need to see some documents, we need to see the legal entity, we need to see the responsible parties, we need to see cost, we need to see projected figures, projected employees, that type of stuff.
That'll be the information the IDA will secure, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Most of us, we have an N.
That's why we have an IDA.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favoring the Cleveland School over to that end?
Madam Chair, but before we go, can we clarify that based on the documentations, to come back to the board of supervisors, that we will, that will give comfort to some of the things that Mr. Christian had asked about, and some of the things I had asked about, so we will know, we will know where we're going with this, and it won't just go out there and transfer to another company that may do something that the community is not good for the community either.
And gosh, Ms. Wallace, if I can, kind of, you know, it's a procedural thing, I mean, and the board can make any, you know, motion to modify or however they want to do it, but I mean, I guess from the IDA's standpoint, and being their legal counsel, they would probably not authorize me to draft an agreement until they believe that there would be property for there to be, for them to have to do that, but I don't know if you want to, again, make the conveyance subject to approval from this board of that agreement, that will, of course, delay, because the board, the IDA will have to approve it, and then you will have to approve. you will have to approve it.
So you'll bring, the IDA will bring their documents back and present it to the public and to us what they're gonna do?
If that's a board to us. Yeah, if that's a board to us, yeah.
Yes, I think we owe it to the citizens. All right, we have a motion on the floor, some Steve and a second from Carl to give the Cleveland School to the IDA. Tim?
I don't have a problem with it, but I would like to see the, the information about it before. We did, I mean, I'm agreeable to, to do it with that condition, like Katie said.
All for both?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, but Katie, you bring it back to us. Ernie, you bring it back to us next minute.
It's mine.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is the given school lease.
Wait, I want to clarify my motion. My motion was to transfer that to the IDA.
Right.
They're gonna bring this back to us as a courtesy to us, but they need to move with this thing.
We voted, we voted on your motion.
Okay, I just, I just did, only misunderstood.
No. All right. Next item is the given school lease.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a public hearing on this matter as well and I know Ms. Thomas came to the board last month and I have prepared a draft lease that will need a little bit, some additions since I've been able to get some feedback from the board members. But basically what this lease is, is basically the same agreement that the school board initially did with the Elk Garden Ministries when they came in and the school board still owned the Elk Garden School. And I guess fundamentally for the lease, the amount, and again, the amount of rent would be up to the board, but the agreement, when it related to Elk Garden, was the school board agreed to accept ten dollars a month in rent, but Elk Garden was responsible for all of the utilities, sewer, trash, trash removal, snow and ice removal, mowing. And so that would also be under this lease, so while the board supervisor would not be making money off this project, it would be covering the cost, the tenant would cover the cost. And I've got other provisions, but if you do, if you do decide to go forward with this lease, if you, if you want to change anything that I've written, I would put that in the motion, but also give me the flexibility to make minor changes 'cause, and to work with the tenant to make minor changes so that we don't have, we can get something finalized before the next meeting.
I'll make that motion that we accept this and upon your final recommendations on that legal review, is that okay to state like that?
Yes, that, as presented, I know that I'm gonna make some changes specifically in the use of premises to clarify a couple of issues that were pointed out to me and also to allow me to make minor changes that might be suggested by that program with the understanding that anything substantial I would bring back to the board.
I'll second that motion for discussion and I'd like, I, I still think, you know, under the termination, we still need to have sixty days rather than thirty-day termination period. And Amanda, this is exactly what we had talked about. You're responsible for utilities, water and electric, ten dollars a month, you'll have to maintain the property and keep the, keep it mowed, the, the top floor is shut off to reduce your electric costs. You've worked with Lonzo to determine what areas, you know, outside the playground and parking area and whatever, there's a bunch of property back behind it that you, it's gonna even need to worry about. And.
You wanna mow the fifty-five back?
Yes, we're glad to do that. But, and there was some mention about maybe keeping the trash, make sure the trash is, is taken off because there's bears up there. I mean, you don't, there won't even be bears. Other than that, I can't think of anything else, but we were authorized, Katie, to go ahead and, and work with you on that.
All right, any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The next thing we have is our general registrar official, the election advisor.
Sweet. We received a notification from the registrar due to all these issues with COVID, requesting a waiver pursuant to twenty-four point two dash three oh seven, or, I'm sorry. Yes, a waiver to not have updated our precincts and, and to certify, I think, I think we need to certify that, that the precincts that we have or, or that on the last is what we still currently have, but just to ask the board to approve a waiver for that, so you don't have to update that at this time.
Do you need a motion for us to, what, to approve this waiver, correct?
Yes, yes, we'll, we'll need to provide our minutes to the Department of Elections.
Okay.
So move, Madam Chair.
Lou, do we have a second? David, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Lonzo, county administrative reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Upon the county administrative reports, first off is from the Virginia Department of Cultural and Animal Shelter Inspection Reports. Again, I would like to point out that the Russell County Animal Shelter, again, passed a yearly inspection with no deficiencies. We, they evaluated the facility, our adoption programs, our healthcare programs and adoptions. The Russell County Animal Shelter takes in about twelve hundred dogs annually without very little to none euthanizing, unless we have a medical problem, elderly hit by car or, you know, some drastic thing. But we, we have one of the most excellent adoption programs there is in southwest Virginia. If you look at the other ones that's going on in Tennessee right now, they're having problems, but as we move forward, you know, again, congratulations to the Russell County Animal Shelter personnel that run it. They have a lot of volunteers, they have a lot of time in this. We have put enormous amount of effort in this to get this up and it's a great accomplishment. Next on the county administrative reports is, of course, VDOT's quick summary of the county, within the county of Route six fifteen slide on Black Valley, the completion of action for this slide, anticipated repairs. The second one is the Pure Salmon Project, which we just discussed. We're getting ready to look at the internal road plans for this project that is a multi-county project out on Rindant Team to, for industrial access funds. We're also looking at the Three Rivers Destination Center. The, this is down at the St. Pile. This is a pedestrian bridge into the Three Rivers Destination Center over into the Ys Expo Center, so it will lead, it will lead into the new park. It will go from the Destination Center to UV Ys Center and then in, progress into the downtown or the State Park. This is part of that piece of the tourism puzzle that, that VDOT is working with, so. Of course, all the maintenance activities, mow grass, I mean, anybody, I don't think anybody here blames about that. But of course, you've seen we're slurring the roads, I mean, everywhere. Last year was the pandemic, so there was a lot of things that was overlooked and neglected during the time. So now they're trying to do catch-up and of course they're slurring, you know, roads that you've never seen done before and they still have a long way to go. So with that being said.
Lonzo, can I interrupt you on this? I had to ask you a question one time about the slurry mix and we said it was only used, because I'd had somebody tell me, you know, that area down in Hansville where the pavements all peeled at, they're not going to slurry that, are they?
Uh, no, sir. They're going to re.
They're going to repave that.
They're gonna repave. If you look at the.
That, that was one question, this fellow had said he'd seen the slurry work and he said it's not gonna work in that area down there.
And that's why they stopped there.
Yeah, if you love some both sides.
I know what it causes, is all those trucks stopping, stopping, you know, the red light in there.
Right, but that's why they stopped the slurry.
Yeah, they, they stopped right.
Because they're gonna dig it up soon.
Yes, yes, they're gonna mill all the way through the red lights and on both sides, that way they can pick it up, because while it happened, the trucks had stopped during this and the salt had dropped off, it had blown, it had blown the asphalt and it will, it'll blow the concrete, so they're gonna repair that. But again, the, of course, they're going to work on the six oh one and slide repairs on that and the drain pipes on Route sixty-seven near Pine Creek. Also, next on the list is Ton Bets Hollow. Of course, I talked with VDOT actually this morning, until John left earlier, on Ton Bets Hollow, I think they did a little work down there around the agreement with the private owner and also Thomas Warner, Rustic Project, the residency, has not received the environmental clearance on this one yet, but intends to begin structure shortly after the clearance, so. Construction projects, the bridge replacement on Route six sixty-three, which is Rocky Fort Road, for which the board approved the closure on the route in June, I also spoke to them on this one, will be closed on or near September the first. There's a slight delay from the original anticipated closure, but the completion date will be early December and not anticipate the impact. The reason for the delay is the materials. Right now, if you're ordering construction materials, you will wait, especially with steel. So if y'all have any issues with VDOT, of course, if y'all have heard, we have a transportation committee, y'all can report your concerns to them. Next on the county administrative reports is just for FYI. As everyone knows, we're, they're trying to get the economy back up as for the board. This is through the American Rescue Plans, this is for economic development and different projects and different perspectives, which we can ask for additional funds, which the county is diligently doing. We're going after, you know, anything for broadband, you've heard of the seventeen million dollar broadband projects that we've been awarded, we're going after additional funds on those, we're also going after any water and sewer. Ms. Di has just got Belfast Phase Three, that was another six hundred and forty thousand dollars, so we're going after these funds too. So that's in the board's packet. Now, on the request, as y'all have heard, the, from Katie, she was talking about the waivers for the, for the registrar's office. Now, we also have the, where the pandemic was here, the redip, the census got delayed and it will be delayed until September. In the meantime, we've got preliminary numbers and quadrants based off the census for us accounting in the voting blocks. So at the, to get ahead of this on this, as county administrator, requesting for the board for a voter redistricting steering committee, you know, will be needed to regard and propose voter districting planning. The committee will review census map, census projections, census data to do the preliminary and final district voter projections. Currently, the county does not have the census, like I said before, but we expect to have it in September, so we're proactively planning to get ahead of this. So I need a motion or I need appointment for the voter district steering committee, Madam Chair.
Okay, so you need me to appoint a couple of people to do that?
Two members, ma'am.
Okay. Tim and Lou, will y'all do that for us?
What does that exactly?
What you, yeah, tell them what it entails. You probably review the census to look at their, what the plan, but the planning will be based on census.
Yes. In, in the proposed census, every county or district throughout Comer Plateau or the counties, our, our county is broke down to census blocks and they're in quadrants and blocks. That will show you the change in households, change in census, the change in school children that has occurred over the ten-year period. Now, if there has been a major change up to the discretion of the board supervisors, that will determine y'all's districts, so, and voting districts. Right now, preliminary, and you know, we can tell by the numbers, this is, there's not been of a, much of a change in Russell County. There's been a few changes in a few areas, the preliminary numbers, and I can't speak to the final numbers for years, in small certain areas. As y'all have seen since the pandemic, I've got tags out of Florida, Kentucky, northern New York, they're moving in. So some of the ones that we have lost through nutrition and moved on, we also have gained, so we're also seeing in our housing sales, but this will be, we'll look at the total voter district for each, each board member's district.
Yes, but the governor appoints those census folks that makes the final, final.
That is correct.
This is just a kind of ad hoc type committee that's just looking at numbers, right?
It is, it is a, well, in, in some of the ones, if you have any boundary adjustments or if you have movements within the towns or certain things like this, this is a way for the board supervisors throughout all ninety-five counties, hundred and thirty-three municipalities to say, okay, there is no changes or there is no major changes and this give input back into the census.
Okay. Can y'all serve on this?
I'll do that, Madam Chair, if you'd, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the county administrative reports is the Virginia Brownfields Assistant Fund. This is, again, a grant for fifty thousand dollars and this is part of the development or the environmental planning and Phase Two environmental site assessment of, again, the Three Rivers Destination Center that we talked about previously with VDOT, with the bridge, pedestrian bridge going into St. Pile. This is the environmental impact on the Destination Center. So it is a grant for fifty thousand dollars and I need approval for appropriation on the.
So we have a motion to accept this money and appropriate.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. We accept the money and appropriate it for the performance agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Paul, thank you. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrative reports is the Virginia Department of Fire and Programs Grant, which is ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is a grant that's given to our fire departments for to buy, to purchase equipment and aid to the localities. As we can see. As you can see, each one of the fire departments in their, and how they structured their, their fundings that were given to each, as you can see, they range from ten to twelve thousand dollars each. These are grants that are given to each fire department within the county that we work for to buy essential, you know, miscellaneous equipment or essential equipment, so they can use it at will in, in their operations. So I need approval for the allocation of ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars to the fire department grant, so move.
I'll second it.
You have discussion? Any discussion?
Yes, please. Basically, I'm voting for this, but are we gonna, do you, do you take grant applications from, from the departments or is it an equal, is it an equal division? How do you do that? I just wanna know.
From the Virginia Fire Associate, Department associated, it is based off the population base, so we're, each, each service area they have, they're allotted each, each area, so that, that's how they work it. Now, they have to expend the money first, this is a reimbursement, this is not given upfront, so they have to account for every dollar that they spend to ensure that it is dedicated to their operations for that equipment, for that service area.
Fair enough, that's exactly what I wanted to, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Next on the county administrative reports in request is the Deputy Mercy Management Coordinator, of course, last time y'all gave me approval to hire this position and the first candidate, we had to go back to negotiation to the second candidate, so again, this is an FYI, don't need a motion on this one. So we will be proceeding to the second candidate for the selection as the Deputy Mercy Management Coordinator position. And of course, the last one on the county administrative reports in request is a proclamation for the Russell County Board. for the Russell County Board Supervisors for the spinal muscular atrophy awareness day proclamation, which will be August 22, 2021. I need approval for a proclamation on this one. This affects approximately 1 in 11,000 babies regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender in 150 Americans in genetic, genetic carrier of the disease. So I need to approve a motion for the approval of August 22.
I'll make that motion, and I'd also like to thank Daniel Meehan, he's here tonight for presenting this to our board. You know, this is very critical that we have this proclamation in, in regards to this, and, you know, any of these others that you all know of or, or can identify, please always contact us so we can do these type of things.
Second.
We have a second, Steve. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that concludes the County Administrator Reports in Request. Thank you.
Okay. Tim, any matters?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Lou?
No, I don't.
Carl?
No, ma'am.
David?
Yes, just a couple, please, Madam Chair. On Saturday, one, I'd like to thank Greg and Melissa Kinsler and all the volunteers that participated in Southwest Virginia Big Rick Showdown. It turned out to be a huge event, which I was not able to attend because I can't, I became a grandpa again, so I'm, I'm real excited about that, and I told Melissa and Greg, I would like to be in here to support that, because what they want to do every year is to give back in the local community and, and some of the areas of, of the county. Part of the, the funding they raised to go to the church ministry that builds handicap ramps, and they've done an outstanding job. I can't remember the last numbers, Steve might know, but it was untelling the handicap ramps that they've built in the county for people in need. And then, you know, part of this funding will go to a project in Holmacre, where we're looking to build a park, a splash pad, and some other things, so. And they got this on their mind and heart to do this, and it turned out to be an unbelievable event. And what we're hoping is that they will continue to do this each year, and I really urge the board to support them in this endeavor.
Well, I will speak to that. I'll jump ahead here, just speaking of that, David, I did come, and it was absolutely wonderful. It was fabulous. The parking lot was crowded, everyone seemed to be having a good time, lots of family activities, and it was, it was wonderful for the town, eleven and the county. It was good.
I've got one more thing, and I know this is in your district, actually, Madam Chair, but you've done a good job getting water and to a lot of the citizens up there in your community, and I know we've got one area there that I don't know who's actually, it could be yours, or it could be in Steve's district, but Aaron Ball, and the, up there in the, out, Corn Valley area is having a terrible...
It's mine, and it's in a terrible district. I've already had Abingdon come out, I've had PSA come out, and there's over two miles of no houses and cost prohibitive. They, I mean, I've had Harvey out, and it is, that, those folks deserve good water, and they deserve good internet up there. But PSA has told me, Harvey has told me, and DHCD has told me, cost prohibitive.
Well, one of the ideas that I had came up with, and I've read it by Steve, since he's one of the members of the Cumberland Plateau Commission, and I had talked to some of the funding agencies in Richmond about all this broadband money coming down that's supposed to serve unserved, underserved areas. And, you know, we could actually put a big niche in this to be able to provide public water and internet at the same time in the same ditch. Instead of double dipping and going after one fund to do one project, why don't we do one project and be able to get broadband internet and actually good clean water to these people? Now, there's many residents up there, one guy especially, that his water is contaminated. He does not, he cannot drink it. He's even fearful of even taking a bath with it, and I've talked to him numerous times, and, you know, he just wants us as a board to try to reach out, so if the Cumberland Plateau has any broadband money, that's an unserved area that don't have anything.
Well, I think there's an application in right now, he's directing that Corn Valley area.
Yeah, there is an application, waiting on reach.
And to address what David had talked about, we, we did this back in, it was in a section line that was going from, I was a project manager on that, going from Duffield in Scott County up to Lee County, and actually installed some conduit in a water line, and we had to do openings like every couple hundred feet, so they could actually blow the fiber into the line, but it's something that can be done. It's a little more costly to dig the ditch, but not near as costly as to dig two ditches separately. So I, I think there is some room to work on that, maybe to do a pilot project, it might be something that we might want to apply for under some of this money that's coming down here, as an innovative project, maybe it'll, you know, we can work our way into doing something like that. But, yeah, it's, but honestly, you know, sometimes, sometimes you just have to bite the bullet and do it, you know, in order to get water to those people.
It is, it's painful, and those folks, I have lived there for years and years and years, there's families, and you can go all the way, all the way to the end of the loop and come out, and they don't have water. It is not good.
I talked to Aaron Ball a couple months ago. I said, I've been following him, and tried to do what I could, but went up against the same thing, and we're still running up again.
Haven't given up on it yet. There's, there's, there's still maybe a way that you can get it done, but it would make it a lot more feasible if we could do the internet in conjunction with, you know, I guess it's cheaper to hang, David, I guess it's cheaper to hang internet on poles.
Not really, no. Pole, pole rental expense is a continual expense. Once it's in the ground, once it's in the ground, you don't have all that pole rental expense and all that, and I know Tim and his district's got areas that need water. All you gotta do is put a, just a rope and a piece of conduit, and then have them come back. It would be a great partnership with Public Service Authority. That would be actually something that they might be able to partner with Cumberland Plateau and make additional funding to help build water projects and not have to be dependent on funding.
Danny Bilton is absolutely fabulous on getting money for the county. She knows what, how to go about it, and she will work diligently for people to do that.
Read for me?
Yes, sir. It's your turn.
Okay, I just got a couple of things. First, I guess, is that, to put the county on notice, Cumberland Plateau, you know, we, we received a substantial body grant, you know, to do internet service, and I've actually, we actually got some, some start stop times at our last board meeting, which was shared in regular session. We started out in executive session, but it went to regular session when the dates were issued. So I gave those to Lonzo, if you want the dates, the start stop dates for the several projects, I think there's like five projects in 2021, you can check with him, and he can get those, but there's, there's five major projects that will be finished by the end of 2021. I think the last one, maybe the Swords Creek Project, finished up in January of '22, and then there'll be another series of projects in '22, but, and we don't know the exact start termination points of those, which is something I think we really need to have in order to plan out some of these isolated areas where, where we can go for money, additional money, some of the areas that we know the point's not going to serve, we need to go ahead and try and get those areas while all this money is available. But I think Cumberland Plateau is looking at submitting another application to the body to do, they've been urged to do that, to go towards what they call a universal coverage, and their definition of universal coverage is that 95% of the population has access to internet. And they've been pretty successful, so it'll be a joint venture between Point Broadband and Cumberland Plateau Company, I guess, and what we're trying to do, they, they're going to ask each of, each of four counties to use $100,000 of their COVID money as match money for this, so I just wanted to put the board on notice that that's a request, in fact, I've got a copy later, and I don't know if Lonzo's got it yet, but he will get it right soon, and I think it'd be money well spent. Cumberland Plateau will probably put in half a million dollars or more, I would say, from their funds, and then the balance would be another $400,000 from, so it'd be close to $900,000, and you're probably looking at a $15,000, $20,000 project altogether, which is not much match money. Another thing, I've had so many calls about the school choice, people wanting, you know, is there any way that the county can do anything? And, you know, I look at it, and I, I think, yeah, there, there ought to be something we can do with respect to this, but one thing we need to know is we need to have an idea of what kind of homeschool, Christian school, or whatever, what kind of count we're talking about. And I think it would behoove us to have some sort of public hearing, maybe at our next board meeting, just to determine the interest in a school choice program of some sort, or an alternative education program of some sort. And so I think I want to make a motion that we hold a public hearing at our next board meeting, and at 6:00 to, and advertise it as, we, to solicit input on an alternative education program for the county, you know, to determine who's interested, if there's a great interest, or if there's not a great interest. I heard Nate say they have petition out there that had a lot of people, we're looking for that all day.
It's not to take away from...
No, it's not to take away from public school. We, we are required by the state to fund our public education program. We do that, plus a little bit, so, you know, we're not talking about taking anything away from schools, we just need, but we can't, you can't address a problem until you know what the, the depth of the problem is, so I want to make that motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Any discussion?
And doing this, we're going to have to try to come up some way to finance this alternative choice of education.
Well, I, I think, first of all, we need to see what kind of interest there is, you know, are we looking at, I, I looked at the statistics last year, and I had, I think it was, I can't remember what it was, it was about 180 altogether with religious exemption and homeschool, it was like 178, 180, or something like that.
I had that down too, and I don't know, just somewhere along...
But at any rate, I don't know if, if it's going to increase, you know, I'm getting calls from people saying, I'm not putting my child in school.
I'm predicting it's going to greatly increase if they do what they say they're going to do.
Before we can do anything, we need to know what kind of volume we're talking about, so that's basically what it is, to, to gauge the interest and to try to get a handle on, you know, what kind of program, and then, you're correct, we would have to develop some program, which would have to be approved by the entire board, you know.
Any further discussion?
So, let me ask you this, so we're going into the educational part of it, you're not going to ask the school board to look at this?
School board has nothing to do with this. This is to develop, to determine if there is an interest in an alternative education. There may be no interest, I don't know. You know, I hear there's a lot, but there's been like 180 of them, you know, last year. I don't know, are we talking about 200, 300, 400? I don't know, you know, so, but I think if the citizens of the county want it, we're obligated to at least look at it, or at least hear what they've got to say.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but I'm, I'm just asking, are we over, are we overstepping over here to the educational side that has already got an elected board?
I don't think, I don't see it that way, no. What I think, what I think we're doing is responding to a request from the citizenry.
Yes.
So, are, with this, you're wanting to develop a plan on...
I want to have a public hearing to determine the interest in an alternative education program, not to develop one, let's just see who's interested in it, and if there's petitions are out there, and if people want to come and speak, then we'll hear, and if there's enough interest, then the board can make a decision on whether or not they want to pursue it. See what I'm saying? I'm not talking about developing anything, but if, you know, you say you've got three or 400 people out there that say, we want an alternative education program, you know, I think that's, that'll be a decision the board will have to make.
Okay, no problem. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of having a public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
6:00.
All right. Of course, do you have any, I'm sorry, Steve, do you have, of course, any matters for you?
Well, I have been confronted about people that, we've had about 40 people die from COVID, and the, uh, field homes are giving the people the information, but they don't know how to process the application to get this $9,000, up to $9,000 that they can receive, so we need to get someone that can process the application for people. Jess Paris tells me he done three, gone and approved, but there's a, there's a cutoff process that he's not doing.
Well, I, I wonder, did that, how does that work? Does field home give the person, the private citizen, that application?
To my understanding, give them the information, and they got to take that information and have someone to process, uh, the grant money, and this can be up to $9,000 if I understand it correctly. If you've got insurance, a COVID $5,000 or expense, there's seven, they will reimburse you for two, and that'll, whichever way you know, your insurance, if you've got a $2,000 insurance, then that was, and it's $7,000, then they will reimburse you for five.
Yeah, that's, that's probably between the field home and that, that citizen, right?
Well, if, if the field home doesn't know how to process it, and if citizen does know how to process, then they're being deprived of getting a reimbursement on the field expense. I think that's something we need to, you know, get into and help these, well, if they, if they were 40, and three was processed, there's 37, that, not getting what they might be due.
All right, the next, the only thing I really have to say, comment, is our next meeting will have to be on Tuesday. Next, our next board meeting is Monday, but that's Labor Day, so we will have our meeting on Tuesday, the 8th, here. All right, any other comments? Anybody else have anything to say?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, David. Do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.